Twenty seven, two thousand fifteen, at six thirty roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Larson.
Here.
Monsieur Terrapini.
Here.
Monsieur Banther.
Here.
Monsieur Seaver.
Here.
We'll now go to public comments on any item that will not be discussed this evening. Seeing none, we'll go to item number one, that's Florida Hospital, North Pinellas Emergency Room Funding. I don't know if you want to start off.
Yeah, just let me give a short introduction. Ron, you can, you worked the slides for me and it's real short. What I tried to do is condense, obviously, we're in work session mode tonight. We haven't been in work session mode for a while. And this is our chance to, one of the times where we can discuss things among ourselves. And, and obviously, we've got an issue, and we have the people from the hospital here to discuss. I don't, didn't want to go through all the past of everything it's been. We've all had our meetings. You have heard my views, you've heard some from the hospital. But just to condense it, Ron did, did a little bit of information. Ron, why don't you go over the first page? Just, just some general information that some of you have asked, and just to see where things are. Just, just do that first page real fast for us. Some information, since the lease is something, not many of us has looked at the lease for, for a while and stuff. So, just go ahead with that first page, Ron.
Good evening, Ron Herring, Finance Director. I just got, like I say, Mark said, a brief presentation. To go about the hospital lease from the current situation where it is, and, and some options for the emergency room funding. As you probably know, it's a forty-year lease. It expires on August thirty-first, two thousand forty. The current annual lease for lease year ending August thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, of three hundred and thirty-five thousand, two twenty-three, forty-seven, has been paid. That's, so they're paid up through, like I say, August thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. The lease increases two percent per year, and that's per the lease agreement. The total remaining balance of the lease is ten million, four hundred and two thousand, eighty-four dollars and sixty-one cents. And, and just some other information, I was going on the property appraiser site. The property is appraised at twenty-nine million, seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars, and it's exempt from property taxes. And on the property appraiser site, it says if there was property taxes, they would total six hundred and twenty-four thousand, one twenty-three for fiscal year two thousand sixteen. The city portion of that would be a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four fifty-two. And some other information on the property appraisers, it had the square footage of the buildings. There was four buildings there. Building number one is fifty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-four square feet. The next one is seventy-five thousand, eight thirty-six. Building three is sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred, and building four is one million, sixty-four. Must be a small shed or something. My next slide is some, if you want me to.
Yeah, let me go put that up and, and let me do the, just go ahead and go to put in all that.
Okay.
Basically, to cut to the chase and get to the importance and the meat of our discussion tonight, where we've got to get to. And is, what we need to talk about is where we're gonna go with this, with the proposal, and, and helping with the emergency room. Obviously, the, the first choice is to take no action. The lease, the lease remains the same. The decision that, for whatever reason, you've heard some of my reasonings, but whatever the reason is, that we take no action, and the lease remains the same. Now, from all we've done, talked about the scenarios I've brought, what I've brought you is the bottom line of, if your decision is not to take the no-action form, and to do a contribution to the, to the emergency room, I have given you the two examples of the best case scenario, what the, the most that I recommend, that we can do. And again, we've got to remember, this is a, this is a business decision. The, the hospital asking us for the money is a business decision on their part. This is a business decision of ours. And there's two ways that if you choose, you want to enter into the contribution and contribute to the emergency room, there's two ways to do it, and if both end up the same amount of money, how I'd recommend it being done. The one is the city contribution. Budgetary item within the lease. Budgetary item, I'm sorry, within the budget, just like we do for safe harbor, for, for the sale, for the homeless safe harbor. You know, that sort of thing, like other, other cities have for their different things. They have a budget, and we budget each year, and we make that dollar contribution. On that city contribution, see if you can put that up there, Ron. On that, as you can see, this would be in balancing from a business mode of us considering our state of the budget, the fact that we're still pulling on reserves, that we are not sure how things go. Obviously, the best-case scenario, this scenario would be brought up between two to five years from now, we got a better feel. But it's not. If issues come up now, we've got to deal with it. In this way, and as an example of contributions, and this contribution's gonna mirror what I do on the recommendation, if we go the, the lowering the lease route in a referendum. That is the amount of budget of money you would have to commit from the money, whether it be additional to the reserve, additional revenue. That would be the suggestion. Now, it can change. That can alter. I gave you some other scenarios, but in that case, every year in the budget, we could, we'd consider things and do it. This is one method to get to the three million, which I think is the middle ground, the, you know, the best-case scenario, if we're gonna help. That's the, that's the target goal, and that's the way we can do it. Obviously, the second way, put up, Ron, is if we do it within the lease and a referendum, and to, to attain that same three-million-dollar goal, the reduction of the lease, and what the question would be that we would put on the ballot to the people to decide, is a set lease at three hundred thousand dollars. As you can see, the amount of money that you would have to commit, make up for in the budget, whether it's from reserve, whether from revenues, whatever it is, that remains the same. And why it's the best decision to do it in this way for us is, as you can see, the first five to seven years, we can accommodate for what we have in the future, for balancing the budget, for maybe bringing the milage rate down. That is manageable in this way. Obviously, the lease is a chance because it has to be voted on. Obviously, in both these scenarios, these would not kick in until that's the CEO of the emergency room is put in. Obviously, the way you can break ground and go, I think by, by the plan, the two thousand seventeen, eighteen budget, that they could have that done and up, but that would be something that we structure into the question. What I have to prepare for and bring back to you, and probably at the public meeting next week, is, is bringing you back a recommendation. Of course, that recommendation's gonna be from what we, you know, what you decide here about what we need to do. If we're going to city contribution within the budget, that's less problematic and time, time-sensitive. Obviously, if we do the lease at referendum, we go to a public hearing next Tuesday, where you would decide, it would, it would be a regular public meeting with a question of, that's the way you're gonna go. Then we would have the second meeting of November, and the first meeting of December, right? To give Irene plenty of time for the, the ballot question. Now, there's a question of whether that can be done a, a different way, but we'll get, we'll, we'll discuss that at, at the second. But we do, do need the time for the next three meetings, that if we are gonna go the lease referendum route, whatever the scenario is, we need to prove it next meeting, next week, and then we do the ordinance and prepare, or, or whatever we need to prepare, we'd have a couple meetings to, to get that voted on, and of course, it, it would go on the election. So, that is basically just in a nutshell, everything that's gone on, the, the bottom line, what we need to talk about and see where the consensus is. And wherever that consensus is tonight, I will bring it back to you next Tuesday night. And we'll, that will be a meeting, of course, where the public will have a chance to respond, and, you know, and you can make a final decision, or, like I say, it doesn't have to be final unless we're going to referendum, which we have a timeline to doing stuff. So that's basically what I wanted to lay out for your discussions and, and questions, or to talk out, and to, and to decide, and to come out of this meeting with a, with a plan to go forward, hopefully.
Thank you. Anyone at this time got any additional questions for City Manager? Not then look to go to Mr. Burgum and the hospital in terms of giving us some information of what's been presented to them.
Mayor, thank you very much. Good luck. Appreciate you taking. So Bruce Burgum, thirteen, pardon me, sixteen, forty-nine Seabreeze Drive, Tarpon Springs. So appreciate you guys taking in, ladies, taking time to visit with us today and to discuss this matter. I know that this is an additional meeting for you, but we, we appreciate you investing the time to talk about this important matter. So what we'd like to do is break this up into two different discussions. I want to give you a very quick but overview of, of some of the successes, what's gone on at the hospital. And I also invited our Chief Financial Officer, Steve Miller, to join us, and we wanted to speak specifically to the, the options here, Mr. City Manager, that you proposed. So with that, let me start here. So obviously, the history of the hospital, you can see how it's changed over the years. You know, on September the first, Florida Hospital Adventist Health System acquired the, you know, the opportunity to manage the hospital there, and, you know, we've been here ever since. I came on board in January of two thousand eleven. So over that time, Adventist Health System has invested approximately fifty-three million dollars. Some of that money went toward funding the retirement plan. Money went toward paying off debt that the hospital had, had incurred. And then obviously, significant portion of that money went toward equipment and other needs of the hospital. So we've addressed the equipment, focused on quality. I think many of you have seen some of the performance marks through Leapfrog that we've achieved over the years. Our physician medical staff has continued to grow, so upwards of, I think we've got close to four hundred and fifty different providers there. And, you know, most importantly, and I know that your Finance Director would appreciate this, is, you know, last year in the two thousand and fourteen statement, the auditors removed the going concern qualification. Those of you there in Finance will recognize that, that statement in essence is that, you know, there's a question about the future of the hospital. So I think this really goes toward some of the successes that we've achieved, both clinically, but also achieved from a financial perspective. So just the awards here. I spoke quickly about the A grade that we received from Leapfrog. We, we've achieved that for four consecutive semesters, and we're waiting for our, our latest report card, and we believe that we will continue the A performance there. So community benefit, I think this is very important that you understand this. Community benefit, this is what the, 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 all the authorities say. This is, this is a really, a number that the community needs to understand. This is the difference between cost of care and what we collect. Not the charges that those of us that go to a hospital and see our bill, it's the actual cost of care. And so these numbers are audited, and you can see on a per-day basis, it's about forty-seven thousand? Forty-eight thou, forty-eight thousand dollars a day, and that's through two thousand and fifteen, so through September. And you can see we have some other donations that we've contributed to the community. But again, those are real numbers that we've, that we've provided to this community in providing care and some other benefits there. On top of that, we've invested some capital equipment, and you can see that number there. So what is ahead? Very quickly, our, this is what we consider our primary service area, our, pardon me, our core service area. This is the area that, that we as a hospital feel we need to capture the market in there, both from admissions and from our emergency room visits. And you guys will recognize that, that geographic area there. You can see how utilization of emergency room continues to grow. Again, my angle's here is not very good, but I believe the numbers there, fifty-three thousand ER visits are taking place just in those core zip codes. And you can see how that trend continues. Frankly, many people use the ER as their primary care service there, and so, but that's, that's what the numbers show. So our, our market share, we are the blue line on top. You can see that we continue to grow and, and expand the gap from our competitors. You can see that our market share is thirty-four percent, and you can see how that number continues to take place. And it's, it happens because we provide great care and that the, and that the customer service that we're doing there, because clearly, we do not have the, the most efficient department at which to operate in there. This is a market share by zip code, so that center zip code is three, four, six, eight, nine. And you will, certainly, that's the one that you would expect a hospital to be the predominant, or a home hospital to be the predominant market share leader. And in fact, we are. The others there are Palm Harbor, Holiday. You can see how we stack up and what our growth has been year over year. So of the, you know, in two thousand and fifteen, we're gonna see about twenty-six thousand visits come through that emergency room. When I started here back in January of two thousand and eleven, we were seeing about seventeen thousand, sixteen to seventeen thousand visits a year. And you can see how that number has grown. And so of the, that twenty-six thousand, roughly eighty percent of those visits are coming outside of our core market area. So, you know, from a economic driver, from bringing people into the community, you can see that, you know, almost twenty-one percent of our ER volume comes to us from other, from other areas of, of either the county, of the, you know, or, or even outside of the county areas there. So we've got some projects going on, so I wanted to just speak briefly to some of the projects that we're working on. You, you have seen, as you drive south on alternate, on nineteen, pardon me, the old King's Inn or Knight's Inn, depending upon your frame of reference, we acquired that property, and we, this is kind of what we're targeting is from an investment perspective for both of these two projects. So the Palm Harbor, again, just a map to show you where it is. This is gonna be a twenty-four-bed, eighteen thousand, five hundred square foot facility, full-service ER. It is in the state of Florida. They characterize these as off-site ER. They are not freestanding ERs, they are off-site ERs, and they are, they have, they must be attached to a hospital, an existing hospital license. It will be staffed with all board-certified ER physicians, and of course, it will have the same level of expertise from a clinical perspective that we offer here on our campus. We will also have CT, ultrasound, X-ray at that location. So just a very quick look at what that, the artist renderings are. We tore down the buildings several weeks ago, and construction is scheduled to start, start in January, assuming we get permission from OCA and the county. So why did we go there? It is absolutely critical to the future growth of this hospital. First to market is very important. It expands our footprint. We all know that if you're not growing, we know how you finish that sentence, and so this is important, that the hospital continues to expand its reach, and so that it can compete in a, in a very challenging marketplace. It provides greater access to quality health care. We talked about some of the technology we're gonna have there, and I mentioned how it's attached to our license. Our on-campus ER. So the, many of you know, and I don't need to go through every one of these, these bullets here, but you know that we're outdated. We have thirteen licensed beds in that ER today. Only four of those beds are private rooms. None of the rooms have a toilet facilities within the, within the rooms themselves. So certainly something that needs to be updated, and clearly, you could not license our ER with those standards today if it was not already pre-existing or grandfathered in. This, many of you see, you, you know the challenges that the ambulance companies have as they come in to, to drop off patients. Our parking there on that ramp, we have ten parking spots, and so you can tell parking becomes very challenging, and particularly when ambulances are trying to maneuver their way into the, into their drop-off points. It, it can be an interesting opportunity for everyone to figure out where to park there. So the existing apartment, you know, we don't, you know, not a lot of acoustical separation. So porch space is very undersized, and, you know, there's times when we are going on diversion. Patients that need care here, that choose to come here, we're unable, either the ambulances are on, divert us, and they're taking patients outside of here, and because they're being diverted, there is that risk that someone may, may not survive until they get to the next open hospital. So some of the challenges we, you see here, these are some pictures that we've taken. You can see how our registration area is not optimal. You can see that we use chair beds to treat and some of the lower-risk patients there. So clearly, we are challenged for space in our current emergency room. So, you know, this is kind of, this is our fast-track area, eleven through fourteen. We've created an additional space there. That's why the thirteen number that I referenced earlier doesn't match up with this. There's a, we found a wide area that we could stick another bed into, so we are using that space there too as part of that care. And it is separated by a hallway today. The reference, or the room eleven and twelve, to the right of that is the garden area, for those of you that walk the hallways. So that would be the area that we would build into as part of our expansion plan. So one other point here, in here, we've got about seventy-three hundred square feet that encompasses our current emergency room. So what we're looking to do is, we want to move our MRI that currently sits outside the four walls of the hospital there, and then in a prefab building there, and move that back inside the, inside the facility, certainly adjacent to our imaging, our radiology department. So that's this up in the top center of the bill, of the, the blue there, that is the MRI being relocated. And then we would create eighteen private rooms as part of this expansion, and certainly, we would need to build in that garden area. A dedicated trauma elevator would, would, you know, we would ask the public to park down on the first level. There'd be a full-time personnel there at the entrance point down on the first level, and with an elevator that would drop us out right in, in front of the trauma room. And this expansion would take us to about sixteen thousand, seventeen thousand square feet. Some of the renderings of what we believe the future ER would look like. It's a nurses' station, moving, bringing our MRI in-house. You can see some of those renderings. So benefits of an ER renovation, obviously, a state-of-the-art facility. You know, it updates our ER to current rules and, and safety standards. You know, it provides the patients with increased privacy. Certainly expands the number of patients that we can take care of, addresses our capacity issue. It provides the residents of Tarpon Springs with, you know, a facility that they can be proud of. And I do believe as a resident here, we deserve, we should expect and deserve the best facility here in our, in our community. You know, we do, we do save lives. I can assure you, we save lives every single day there because we are located here. Many of you know that when they rank cities, they, they look to see if a city has a hospital. And I believe we're fortunate that, to have a Florida hospital here in this community. We will be on par with other hospitals, other emergency rooms in the area. And many of you know that we are the largest employer in the city of Tarpon. We have upwards of seven hundred total employees. I think full-time equivalents are around five hundred and fifty employees. And the expansion of this center, along with our Palm Harbor unit, would add close to a hundred additional staff persons working at the hospital, full-time staff people. And I, I don't think it's a stretch to suggest that we are an economic driver here in the community. And we have a strong impact. So again, some further renderings. So let's talk about the legal structure of the hospital, and we happen to have our attorney here, if there's some further questions here, Lori Tepper. But as you know, the parties to the lease today are City of Tarpon Springs and Tarpon Springs Hospital Foundation, Inc. So those are the two parties. As, as was presented earlier, the lease agreement goes through two thousand and forty. Tarpon Springs Hospital Foundation entered into an agreement with UCH back in two thousand, when that transaction took place. So UCH was the sole member of Tarpon Springs Hospital Foundation, Inc. When Adventist Health System acquired UCH in September thirty, two thousand and ten, Adventist Health System through the UCH organization became the sole member. These are a non, you know, Tarpon Springs Hospital Foundation is a nonprofit organization, and so, and as is Adventist Health System. So I'd, I'll stop there and see if I've made that clear, if there's any clarification that I need to offer there. So the property that we, that was acquired in Palm Harbor is deeded to Tarpon Springs Hospital Foundation, Inc. If you check the property records, you will see that. The property is acquired with no debt to the hospital. It was a, it was contributed by our corporate office. And the building of that, there will be no debt added on to the hospital or to that center. So it will be, it will be built with, with essentially an investment by the corporate office. So I'm gonna ask Steve Miller, our CFO, to come up here and walk you through this. We were, I believe your sec, your assistant there, Mr. Manager, sent us the, some of the information that you showed earlier. So we've tried to take that information and, and present it up here so that we can have further talking points to, to the financing of this, this opportunity.
Stephen Miller, Chief Financial Officer at Florida Hospital, North Pinellas. As our CEO mentioned, I'll just walk you through some of the, the scenarios that were presented in some preliminary information. And, and I'll, I'll start with just looking at scenario two, which was one that, that was just reviewed, and does show the, basically, the, the remaining payments over the next twenty-four years, as proposed, to reduce down to three hundred thousand annual payment, with the next payment coming due totaling three hundred and forty-one thousand. So in total, those remaining payments would come out to about seven point two million dollars. Now, from an accounting perspective, we account for the, the lease as a net present value, the current value of those future, future payments. And so the present value of that would, would come out to about four point four million in that scenario two. You can see the other scenarios that were in some of the preliminary paperwork I've outlined in scenario one and scenario three as well. And so under those, those scenarios, you could see the net capital contribution that would be available to, basically, make available towards a capital project, such as we're discussing this evening, would be approximately one point seven million with that scenario two. It would be about one million and two point two million for scenarios one and three. So I'll just stop there and see if there are any questions as to some of those, those numbers. So currently, and, and I, I may just move forward to the next slide to kind of walk through, through that scenario. Currently, and, and some of this information was, was presented earlier as far as what the, the current value of the remaining lease payments represents. Currently, twelve million dollars was the thirty-year total. The remaining payments are, are basically right at ten million. And so the, the current lease liability from, from an accounting perspective. And so, the, the current lease liability from, from an accounting perspective discounted at a rate of 4.35%, which is what our, our auditors have advised us to use, basically places the net present value of that, the current value of the lease liability at 6.1 million. And you can see that over on line, in the fourth column there, 6.126 million. So the, the present value of those future payments represents basically 6 million. And so, a complete elimination of the lease would basically free up 6 million dollars of, of capital. Under some of the other scenarios, would free up some capital, but not, not as much as, as what, what would be, you know, outlined. We've also, let me just go back to, to the, the prior slide. Also, under another scenario was proposed as potential financial contribution from the city versus amending the actual lease document, lease terms themselves. And in that case, there clearly would be some present value that would be associated with that. Under, under one, one scenario at 3 million in, in scenario two, in that second, next to last column there on the screen, 3 million dollars would be the total cash payments. The present value of that would represent approximately 1.8 million. However, in that, in that scenario, we would not be able to really amend what our current lease obligations would be reflected on our balance sheet and really make any additional capital available for, for the, a future project. So a, a lease modification, the terms of, of the current lease would be required really to free up any, any current capital under the current lease. So we have outlined some potential alternatives, and I don't know, Bruce, did you have any comment you want to make there?
What have y'all need to do for clarity?
Okay, that'd be great. So let me, so in our current, in the financial statements, the most latest financial statements that were dated 12/31/14, where's that? Go back to the 6 million. That 6 million 126 is what's the current value of those future obligations. So we, that's, that is, that is established on our balance sheet as a liability, a portion of that short-term, next 12 months, the balance of it is long-term. In the, in the accounting world, and in, and certainly Adventist Health System follows, you know, generally accepted accounting principles, we are obligated to set aside or take away from our capital spend that amount of money. So, you know, just a quick example, if we had 7 million dollars of capital spend, we would have to set aside 6 million of that and only have 1 million dollars spent in the future. It's just, you know, it's, it's what, it's how the generally accept, or how the accounting bodies desire that to be. So I just wanted to orientate you where the 6 million 1 came from. It is, it is present in the financial statements. And so, I think what we were trying to say, you know, if, if we did it as a line item every, every year, you know, the auditors would say, you know, there could be a change in, in what the thought process is of the commissioners, you know, based on the economic, I think that was the term you used in the letter there, Mr. City Manager, that, you know, if the economic conditions did not warrant, then it may be a little less, or if they were better than expected, a little bit more than what you had initially targeted to make a donation there. So unless it's backed up by a lease, our auditors will not allow us to, to reduce this, the, the current liability or the capital obligation associated with this project. So I just wanted to, you know, clarify those two points.
So basically, there are three scenarios outlined. Rather than reduce or eliminate the lease altogether, would be three different scenarios proposed that would be variations of, of what was proposed by the, the city manager. Scenario one would basically, over the next, the remaining 24 payments, reduce that annual amount to 100,000 dollars. That would total payments of 2.4 million. And the, the present value of that would be 1.471 million, which would basically free up capital of 4.6 million. And in scenarios two and three, you can see that it would, it would, for the, the coming payment, would not make any adjustment, would leave that at 341,000 dollars, and would step that down over one year or five years, down to 100,000 for the remaining terms. And you can see that the, the capital that would be made available would be 4.4 and just over 4 million in scenarios two and, and three there. So any, any further questions about, about how that would, those calculations would work or the, the calculation of that, that present value?
Just, just for clarity for me, looking at scenario two, you said 341. That would be basically eliminating any payment to the city?
In, in scenario two?
Right.
In scenario two, then the, the payment that would be due in September 2016 for the fiscal year 2017 would be made as, under the current terms. And then thereafter would be reduced to 100,000 dollars over the remaining 23 years of the, of the lease term.
Okay, all right.
And then, and then scenario three, essentially, we just took a different, a different step down of that, you know, realizing that, you know, some, a lot of conversations needs to take place. And I think it was done over a five-year period until we get to the 100,000 dollars So happy to answer any questions. Our, our preference here would be to either scenario two or scenario three. This would allow us to keep moving forward or to move forward with, with the project planning. I think what I failed to point out to you earlier was where would the balance of the money come from? You know, this is approximately, certainly, we've talked about the 6 million dollars, anywhere from the 4 to 6 million. We would work with our foundation to go out and raise the funds from persons, person, or person here in the community or throughout the, the region here toward this project. So that's where we would look for the additional, the additional balance to, to make this project work.
Thank you. Commissioner Banther, I still everybody's kind of...
Thank you.
Have we overwhelmed you with numbers?
I, 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 I tend to like numbers, so it's not, it's not too bad for, for me. So we'll see here. Overall, I mean, it goes without saying that we all agree this project needs to happen. It's how we're going to pay for it. I mean, there's no real debate. I've been to ER with, with my wife before. It's, you get great medical care, but the environment's not really what you want to be in. So that goes without saying. And obviously, with the hospital, their contribution to this, to, to, to the city with the, the employment, I think you said you added 250 employees coming in, the economic benefit of that of them, you know, hospital living, working in Tarpon, eating out, et cetera, is a huge deal. So we're great, we are very, we're very appreciative of the hospital and what it's done. And this type of scenario, in my, you know, short experience, on a common worthy, you know, let's see, comes to the, you know, the landlord and has a proposal for improving the property and, and wants to amend some of the agreements. You know, especially though in this situation, we're dealing with taxpayer money, so there's definitely more precautions we have to deal with. And also, you know, we're not just looking, as you know, at this year or next year, even though, you know, none of us will be here in some odd six years or five years, you know, we're looking at what are we going to lock the city into long-term? And we always have to be, we, we, we always have to be mindful of that. I am thankful how you all did, first off, I, I think the assumption's clear that you have the, you have the, the, the lease capitalized, correct?
Yes. It is capitalized on the financial statements.
So it, so, 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 so it's not operational, it's recorded on your balance sheet. And, and thus, that's why the scenario that you prefer reduces the payments down, assuming it's approved in, in referendum. And that's the big assumption here too, is that the public would vote on that. We can send it to referendum because we think it's a good idea, but the public has the say in this. And there's not a real way to tell how that would go. That, that's always the risk. So it's capitalized and, so you're basically, you know, if we, I, I tend to like the idea that the, the city manager had brought, brought forward where, because, not, not, not to get ahead of myself, so I understand, obviously, us doing a line item in the budget, it's just essentially us being like, like a donor each year.
Correct.
You can't, you can't do anything with that, with that, with that total amount in, 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 in the capitalized lease.
Sure.
Okay, so if it goes to referendum and it's approved, you all, that frees up that liability, that capital, if you will.
Yes.
And you're able to immediately act upon that. So there's a difference in those two, though it might come out to the same dollar, and what we're looking at on paper, there's a difference in how you could, you could, you could, you, you could use that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. But Mr. Licarus, I think you did, what was the amount you did for freezing at 300,000, correct? Okay, the, the one benefit of that I see that I kind of like is, though as opposed to doing it at 130,000 dollars in the budget line item, the city is in theory, anybody correct me if I'm wrong, saving money until about 2028 or 2029. Because what we're losing in lease payments is less likely be contributing, correct, Mark? Am I right with that assumption?
You lost me.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't get that.
So in, in the two scenarios, looking at what you gave us, okay, if we have the option of giving, looking at that, at that, at that 3 million mark, okay? If we're giving in a, when a budget line item per year, okay, that, say, we say, we like that tonight and it gets approved in the next meeting, that's, so then immediately, once that project's CO'd, we're giving that 130,000 dollars a year until a future commission would change that, correct?
You're talking about the one...
That's the budget line item.
The original backup, not what I gave you tonight.
Okay, well, what would, so...
Is this column right here you're speaking to?
Yes, that's what we would be giving instantly though. If we were, if we agreed to not, not go to referendum and do a budget line item, we're giving that pledged amount immediately, correct, inside the budget?
No, that was an example of what the number would have to be consistently to get to that bottom line. It could be less or, it could be more. What, what I gave you tonight, what I gave you tonight in the scenario to do it, was the better situation for us, that if we did it strictly by the referendum way, that is what you do. That 130 is an arbitrary number, it's one number divided by that would give...
Well, just, well, even in theory then, it's good to, to help people understand that. If we, if we have one, one large number in mind, and we say, well, how do we get there? Is it referendum or is it a line item? Okay, if it's a line item, in, in, in that scenario of 3 million dollars, the city is, the city is in theory losing more money until about 2028 in these calculations, as opposed to if we went, went to, went to the, the referendum and it was approved and the lease got reduced down, down, down to 300,000. And then we would start to be in the, though in a deficit, that money in 2028, it's just simple, it's just math inside here. So I'm saying that's one, look, now the downside of that in the referendum, even though we're saving money for about 12 years, is that we can't change that, correct?
Correct.
So if, if we have another downturn in the economy, we're, we are, we are stuck with that deficit, or opposed to if we get an influx of cash, I don't see that happening, but if it did, we couldn't give more per se. So that's the difference that I'm trying to look at. And, and what you, the, the information that, that you all gave me helped me understand better that with this le, with this lease, how, how you, 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 you have capitalized, the benefit to you is, is much more if the amount of, of the, of the lease has changed. Though the amount that I feel comfortable with, if it was going to go to referendum just for my colleagues' sake, would be, you know, 300,000 preferably, I, I, going below 250 kind of gets me uncomfortable. And that's, that is kind of where I'm at as far as how low I would want to go on lowering those lease payments and freezing them. I'd be willing to look at something graduated, not the example that, that the hospital gave us, something like that where it started off less and then it was more and more. So I, I really think if we're gonna, if, if the city's going to partner with a hospital on this, for it to be effective, I don't see really how it couldn't go to, to a referendum because you couldn't do too much with the line item budget. But, you know, that, there's a lot of, there's a lot of possibilities of how that might not happen with a vote. And then we also lock the city into future losses with that. But like, like I said, compared to doing a line item, item budget with that 3 million dollar example, give or take, the city could save money for 12 years. So I'm sure I've confused myself enough now too, but I, I just like accounting, so it's kind of a fun thing. So, but I, I want to hear what, what, what my, my colleagues think. But I, I obviously, in a, in a, in a perfect world, forgive, forgive the lease would be excellent. We just can't afford to do that when we're using reserves to balance our, our, our budget. We, we just can't do that. So I am in favor of, of reducing it to some amount that, that we can agree upon. I don't think we can go as low as what the hospital is proposing to 100,000, unless I'm convinced differently, but maybe somewhere in the 250 to 300 range. Because, well, I like the budget line item that it doesn't lock us down. I, I don't really see it meeting the purposes of what we're trying to do here. So that's all. Thank you.
So what I understand you to be saying is you're in favor of this scenario right here, bringing the lease payment...
Something along those lines, yes.
And so that would allow us to have essentially 1.6 million dollars in, in net present value capital, correct?
Correct.
Or, or under the, or under the 260 scenario, 2.2?
Yes, two between, I'm, I'm kind of between 250 and 300, but I've got to hear what my colleagues think so I can be convinced.
Yeah, there's, why are there, I had a question that came up from one of the commissioners about what do other hospitals, what are their arrangements with their landlords, so to speak? And, you know, without getting into specifics...
Just give it for a second. Are y'all able to pick up that? Because I know you're not talking to the mic or something.
Sorry.
Yes, we have the microphone.
I'm sorry. So you, I was asked the question, what are other examples of what's, you know, that Adventist Health System has experienced in other communities? I know that one of our sister hospitals here in the Tampa market, it's a very complex formula. It factors in the amount of the community benefit that they provide. And that particular hospital does about 7 million dollars annually. I think you saw where we, pardon me, monthly, so that would be, what, 96 million, if my math is right, annually. And you could see where we're doing close to 10 million, 11 million, 12 million dollars annually in community benefits. They pay 1 dollar a year. We have another hospital in another part of the country that I think their lease payment annually is about 50,000. And we have, there's several hospitals that receive taxpayer-assisted funds to, for some of the community benefits that they do provide within the community. So I, I intended to share that with you.
Thank you. I, I would like to thank the hospital for being here and for making the presentation. It certainly is a lot of numbers and a lot of information, but I do, I appreciate the, the information. And, and I definitely want to express my appreciation to the hospital for being the largest employer in our city, for the great improvements that they've made to the facility in recent years, and maybe more importantly, for the great improvements that they've made in terms of the quality of care in recent years. It, it's very much a, a part of the city of Tarpon Springs and it's very much appreciated. As we look at the emergency room addition or improvement at the city location, it definitely needs to be, in my opinion, a budgetary discussion. I want to make it real clear that it isn't a, a popularity contest. And, you know, when we look at a lot of the information, it, a lot of it was whether or not we need it. And yeah, I definitely think that the hospital needs it. It's, it's definitely important. So the question is, how can the city help in a responsible way? As the, as Commissioner Banther mentioned, we're dealing with taxpayer money. So I'm, I'm definitely interested in the city being a partner with the hospital. So the question is how we can do that. One, one method of helping would be to help with the fundraising efforts. I know Bruce mentioned that there's going to be efforts to get people within the community to make contributions. And I think as a partner, the city could offer city facilities for any fundraising events, use of the city TV channel to, you know, get the word out regarding event... uh, use of the city TV channel to, you know, get the word out regarding events, uh, use of our city's social media, electronic signs, even literature within our utility billing. Uh, I think those are great ways that the city could partner. Um, as we look at what to do from a financial standpoint, if we talk about lowering the lease, and I, I know there's talk of lowering it to three hundred thousand or two hundred and fifty thousand, or eliminating it altogether, as we look at these different options, um, I think we need to discuss at this level, I think it needs to be a politi- policy decision from the elected officials, if we are going to cut something in, in terms of revenue, because the lease represents revenue that comes into the city. If we're going to cut the lease agreement by fifty thousand dollars, hundred thousand dollars, whatever it is, I think we need to decide how we're making up for that in the budget. So if, if that's what we're choosing to do, does that represent a, a increase in taxes in order for us to, to meet our, uh, our current obligations? Or does that mean that we're taking more money from reserves? We're already taking some money from reserves, does that mean we're taking additional money from reserves? Or is there something else in the budget that we're willing to cut from the budget in order to accommodate, what essentially amounts to a donation to the hospital? So is, is there, you know, forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars that we could cut from the budget in year one? Fifty-five thousand that we could cut from year two, so on and so forth, if we're trying to get to the three hundred thousand dollar figure? And, and I think these are valid questions to discuss, but I, I think they need to be discussed. I, I don't think we can simply say, yeah, we're gonna lower it by a certain amount, without having a plan in place on where we're gonna get that money coming, to, to come from. Um, speaking only for myself, I'm not in a position where I'm wanting to raise taxes, raise the mileage rate at this point. I'm also not wanting to obligate us to take additional money from reserves at this point. Um, that's, I, that's where I am, cause I know we're already taking some money from reserves, so if we're taking more, uh, I'm not comfortable with that. So then that leaves us cutting something from the budget in order to, to make this contribution. I personally am not aware of what we could cut from the budget, I, you know, we are a full-service city and our residents expect certain services and, and we're able to offer that right now, and we, we've handled some really tough times in, in terms of the economy. And I applaud our staff and our city manager for how we've been able to handle that. But we, we need to continue to be able to offer those services, and there's, there's really nothing that I'm aware of that we could cut. And in fact, during some of those tough economic times, I know we had kind of pushed back certain uh, capital improvements that we needed to make and certain budgetary items were, were removed from the budget so that we could limit how much money we took from reserves over some of those, uh, tough times. Um, additionally, I'd like to thank Commissioner Banther, he really was the one who, uh, on a quarterly basis, really asked the city manager to provide us with some of those budgetary projections. And I know from those projections that we are still taking money from reserves. And, and it really is because of those projections that I, I think we need, if, if we are going to move forward with something, I think we need to be very specific on how, how we're going to fund that contribution. Uh, so that's, that's kind of where I am at this point. Um, the other thing I would ask of, of staff is whether or not, um, this has gone before the budget advisory board and what their recommendation was, cause I don't know if we received that yet or not, but I know there was talk of this being an, an agenda item in some form, uh, before the budget advisory board.
The budget advisory board discussed it, but obviously, as you see members here tonight, they wanted to watch again, because again, they just had me presenting it. Um, so they wanted to be here tonight, we discussed it at the meeting last week, and they wanted to be here tonight to hear the discussion and see where the consensus was and then to basically act on the consensus. Like I say, you got members here if you wanna ask them scenario, but that's my general terms of what they wanna do and see what the consensus. Obviously, that's why we had that work session, there's no consensus aboard without having this public meeting here and stuff. So I think they wanted to see that first before they made a decision or recommendations or, well, I'm looking at it, but it was discussed at the last meeting.
Very good, thank you, yeah, so just to kind of wrap up, for me, I, I think it's, uh, important that we try to find ways to partner with the hospital. It is certainly, um, an important cause that we, that we should wanna be a part of, but I think we need to be very complete and thorough in, in what we say. If we are going to make a contribution of a certain dollar figure, I think we need to be able to say where that's coming from in the budget, thank you.
Thank you, um, thankful for the opportunity to speak, uh, tonight. Um, I will say, it is a little cold in here, so if you turn the air down, my thoughts may be a little clearer.
I'm as comfortable I've ever been in a, in a public meeting.
So, the brain freeze aside, um, you know, we could go on and on tonight about how important it is for the hospital uh, and the community to have a hospital within the community, so that goes without saying. I'd say that as a whole, uh, this board has stood behind the, the hospital through the name change and through several other things that was important to the hospital, for the hospital's success, because ultimately, we want the hospital to be successful, um, because there's a partnership with, with the community and within the community. So, you know, that's a, um, that, that's a given at this point. Um, so moving forward, I think it's important to look at some of the backup that, uh, our finance director provided through the city manager. Um, and just, just as a point of reference, the property appraiser has the facility at thirty million dollars. So, if we just look, just for conversation purposes, if we just look at a lease payment of three hundred thousand dollars, that's one percent of the value of the facility. So, and I say that because the biggest thing for me, and has always been a big thing for me when talking about the hospital and the community, is that the community owns the hospital and the facility, right? And that's why it's so important to look at what, uh, the Adventist group has done with our hospital. They've invested fifty-three million dollars in our facility, in, in our hospital. So, moving forward, as we look at a new ER facility, that is a facility that will be owned by the community. So, whatever the contribution is from the community and whatever the contribution is from the city and the contribution from the Adventist group, whatever that totals, at the end of the day, there's gonna be a twelve million dollar facility there that is owned by the people, so, and owned by the community. So for me, that's always been the big picture, is that the facility is ours. So I don't have a problem, you know, contributing on a city level, whether or not we can afford it and where we're gonna get the money and being taxpayers' dollars, that's, that's a separate issue. But it's, it's justifiable for me solely because it's our facility. So, that's always been something that's very important to me. Um, moving forward, if we, when we look at what we're gonna do here, I think it's extremely important uh, to one recognize, which Commissioner Banther touched on, is that it can't be a line item, item because it's, there's no point discussing that because the hospital can't do anything with that in terms of how they finance this project. They have to know that they're gonna get X amount of dollars a year, or our contribution is X amount of dollars a year, so they can move forward. So I think, you know, that, that aspect and that recommendation, um, for me is, you, that's over with. Uh, the other thing is, which has been discussed a few times, is whether or not what we decide will go to referendum, it has to go to referendum. Um, it has to be, you know, rectified by the people, they have to be able to vote on it. As the elected officials, we're making a recommendation to the public and saying, this is what we've deduced. You elected us to make the decision, this is our decision, but here it is for you to ultimately decide on your facility and your taxpayer dollars that are gonna be contributed. Um, so to me, that's something, uh, that's important as well. Um, you know, Commissioner Banther and Vice Mayor Larson raised a good point in terms of where the money is gonna come from, and that's something that we absolutely have to think of. Um, you know, we are still taking some money from reserves, um, but at the same time, going back to the facility and the value of the facility, um, to me, you know, to pull some money smart, you know, in a, in a, uh, fiscally responsive manner, responsible manner, to pull some money and contribute to our own facility, um, whether we have to sharpen our pencils a little bit more, that's something that I think that we're gonna have to do. I mean, me personally, I have enough confidence in the city manager to know that he wouldn't have given the proposals or the recommendations that he did, if ultimately, at the end of the day, he didn't feel like he could still balance the budget in a responsible manner. So, whether we give, whether we, we freeze the, the lease payment or we reduce it or whatever, I have enough confidence in the city manager and our finance director to know that if they didn't feel comfortable making those recommendations, they wouldn't have done it. They would have just said, hey, look, we can't afford to do anything, you know, we appreciate what the hospital's doing and will continue to do, but for right now, we're out. Um, so, in, in any one of the recommendations that was made by the city manager, I'm comfortable with. So, if it wasn't so cold in here, I could probably think a little bit better, but-
I'm working on it, buddy.
Okay. Um, the other thing that I feel strongly about, and it has absolutely nothing to do with the hospital, the hospital's done absolutely everything that they said that they were gonna do, um, to turn the hospital and the perception of the community around. So I'm thankful for that. But, I do feel strongly about that whatever we decide and whatever's passed in referendum, our contribution cannot take place on paper, we can commit to it, but it cannot take place until the, the new ER facility is CEO'd, period. Um, so that said, I understand, uh, what was proposed by the hospital and how you have to look at it from a net present value and a net capital contribution, that's fine. Um, but, but from the city's standpoint, we have to look at it in our best interest, right? Um, and those interests coincide, as I said. So, so for me, um, I'm, you know, I'm more of a fan of what, what Mark and, uh, the finance director, Mr. Herring produced, which is, uh, more so of, of freezing the lease. Um, so, you know, I'm certainly comfortable at the three hundred thousand range. Um, that gives a, a contribution on our end, you know, aside from the net capital contribution of about three million dollars. Um, you know, I, I would be willing to discuss it more, I would be willing to discuss, you know, doing more of a stepped uh, scenario, which is something that the hospital produced. Um, I certainly don't see us going to a hundred thousand dollars because then we step into that, that area of uncertainty, which is what Commissioner Larson talked about as far as where does the money come from. Um, you know, I, I would say though, and I will ask you, uh, Mr. Bergen, where, where are you kind of developing the numbers in terms of? Well, we know it's gonna be almost a twelve million dollar, eleven million dollar facility, but where, where are you getting your projection?
Where does numbers come from?
Well, no, no, I understand the eleven million, that's hard numbers, but where are you getting, you know, four million from the community, four million from, uh, AHS? Where are those numbers?
Sure, uh, let me just take a step back, obviously, uh, well, maybe not obviously, we're working with Hunt and Brady, a very renowned architectural firm. They designed the concept, the initial concept that we shared with you initially, some of you may have seen, that was a thirty million dollar concept, which clearly wasn't, uh, practical for this community at this time, based on where we are with our, our performance. So, you know, they redesigned it, came back, and we, it came back with what's, uh, is very functional, very, uh, workflow good, and it solves many ills that we currently see. So, you know, how did I come up with the numbers, Commissioner Terapone was essentially, I, I knew what the present value of the lease was, six million dollars. I knew what the architects were suggesting it would be in, in, uh, you know, today's dollars. And, you know, obviously, this project's gonna take a few more dollars as, as we, you know, continue to push it off. But they said their number is right at eleven million dollars for that project. So I took the, the eleven million dollar project minus the six million dollars here, and I came up and, and we've sat down with our, our, our foundation, and the foundation felt that they could achieve and, and raise in a relatively, uh, uh, short period of time, the five million dollars. Now, some of that money may be pledged over time, but again, if we know that that money is forthcoming, I believe that as a company, we would feel confident moving forward and fronting the money to, to get to this, to cover the entire, um, cost of the project. But I appreciate your comments very much, and I appreciate you pointing out that a line item really doesn't address any of the, the, uh, the scenarios that we need to get to to make this happen there, so. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, you did, so my, really my question in specific was the contribution from the community, which the foundation board said that they feel like they could re- and, and that's, you know, that's a good sounding board. Obviously, the foundation board is made up of members of the community who, who have a, a pretty good idea of where they could go and get five million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think that's a fair number. Um, so if you, if you take about two million dollars from the city and you take five million dollars from the community, you're at seven, so you need four.
Correct.
Um, so, at our last meeting, I touched a little bit on some of the heartburn that I had, although I understand the market share and capturing it and what you had to do strategically, um, for the Palm Harbor site. But at the, at the same time, if you're trying to capture the market share for this area and you have a, a, a big hospital facility in Tarpon Springs, if the Tarpon Springs Hospital in our facility, in your facility, doesn't thrive, then what is the benefit of, of the other facilities? Right, I mean, you have, you gotta capture the market share and you gotta reach out there and you gotta get it. But at the same time, but let's call it the parent facility, that has to thrive as well. So, so for me, you know, my focus is in Tarpon Springs.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, I'm, I'm more than willing to help, I think I've conveyed that. Um, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable at freezing the lease at three hundred thousand dollars, why? Because it gives us time and it doesn't, we already, we already attribute that value to our budget right now, plus or minus, a little bit of a minus. So I'm comfortable with the abilities of our staff and knowing the projects that we have coming on within the community in terms of additional adware and tax revenue, to know that we'll be okay. Um, you know, maybe we could do a little bit better than that, potentially, we could do, what was the other scenario, Mark, two, uh, two sixty or something?
Two sixty, yeah.
Two sixty, ma- you know, maybe, 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 uh, maybe. But, that's in a nutshell where I'm at. I mean, I wish that I could subscribe more to the net capital contribution because I understand that that's what you have to do. But at the same time, you know, I have to sit up here and look at what's best for the community and the taxpayers and what I think, uh, is fiscally responsible, thank you.
Thank you, uh, again, we, as we've all said, we appreciate what you've done, the money you've put into the hospital. Uh, we just had a visit last week with my daughter to the emergency room and quite a difference from, uh, the last visit, uh, with my daughter to the emergency room. So, uh, yes, thank you for all your contributions, uh, and I appreciate everything that you all have said. I liked some of the ideas that Vice Mayor Larson, uh, mentioned as far as fundraising and partnering with the city. Uh, and thank you for answering one of my questions, another question I did have last time was also, um, if with other hospitals, uh, that you've had to experience, if improvements are made, if you've been given any kind of, um, credit towards your leases.
You know, as, to the best of my knowledge, and I've been with the company for twenty years, and I've been at, uh, I don't know, six or seven hospitals, and, uh, and all the, all the movements were up, just for the record, I wasn't invited to leave. But, uh, uh, you know, the, uh, you know, really, the, the presence of an operating lease or a capital lease in this scenario is really, uh, rare. Uh, I, you know, I think in the state of Florida with the, the one other hospital in the community, or in the area that, that I think essentially pays a dollar a year, I think that's the only hospital that is, has a lease arrangement. Certainly, many of the assets were received from the city or that transaction occurred. And, and as I mentioned earlier, many communities are, uh, funding or making contributions to the hospital to cover some of the indigent care that they experience as a result of being in that community. So, honestly, outside of the state of Florida, I, I don't know, I don't have a real good handle on what goes on. The couple hospitals I was at, there was no lease payments being made.
So, based on what I've been hearing and what you all have said, uh, contributions, um, would not work, basically, so you're, you're more-
It doesn't allow us to-
Yeah, okay, so you're really looking more at a lease reduction or, you know, some of the scenarios that, that Mark has pointed out. And we have responsibility to our citizens, so again, I, I have a hard time thinking what's gonna happen in the future because we don't know, uh, it might be nice, but looking at making a decision to twenty thirty-nine, um, I guess I have a difficult time thinking, uh, that way. Um, I do like some of the scenarios, like the three hundred thousand, even the three forty-one. Uh, but since it's gonna go to referendum, I'm just wondering if putting something else out on the table is doing it only for five years, five, five-year term, uh, freezing it for five years, uh, and an option to go back and look at it again in five years. So that we're not committed to something until twenty thirty-nine. So that's my thought, uh, for you all to think about.
Thank you, um, but my plan, as I asked my colleagues, is that, you know, during work session normally, the, the process is one of, within our rules, is that it's us discussing it, not really looking at, uh, public comments, but to see if there's some additional comments, and I tell you, uh, a wise man told me once that you learn more by listening than you do by talking. So I'm, I'm really, I'm concerned as to, um, what type of information that we need. Uh, I, I've shared with Mr. Bergen privately and I've shared here publicly is that, you know, they made it- they made a decision, whether we like it or not in Palm Harbor, that was a business decision, they looked at it for market share. My perspective and what I'm gonna base my decision on is one of what's gonna be best for Tarpon. And it's something that we always have to remember. Commissioner Banther touched on it a little, Vice Mayor touched on it a little. One thing that everybody have to understand is this, is that let's just eliminate the lease and then see what we'll do for is having a three hundred and forty-one thousand dollar deficit right there, period. And that right there says, hey, that's something to really think about. We look at our city manager, we say, hey, we want you to work miracles, but you take three hundred and forty thousand dollars plus three hundred and fifty thousand and we got from reserve, you save, you got a seven hundred thousand dollar deficit there. How do you make that up? So I know you guys have to make a business decision, but we have to make one too.
Certainly.
But all that being said is that what's unique about this situation is that it's always been a partnership. Yes, it's city-owned, city invested in it because it was something that they valued and believed that should happen for as the citizens of Tarpon. And when they look for various partners, it was always one of the city had a responsibility. Now, I know that it would be very easy to say it's a dollar a year because others are doing it. But, you know, the economics to me doesn't work quite well that way. If you had it whereas that three hundred and fifty or forty thousand dollars was going into the reserve fund, it was not touching our general fund, and then we could disregard it and not have to do anything, that would be one thing. But because it does hit the general fund, and that's what everybody have to realize is that this hits the general fund. And it means that when you do some things, you better do, as Vice Mayor said, you better be ready to compensate for that in some shape or form. Now, I believe that city manager thinks, even though he did kind of recommend that we take option one, and that's not to do anything. But being somewhat of a rational, reasonable individual, he's saying, well, he got some people up here that might wanna do something. So what are ways that we can do something and still be able to manage the city in a way that needs to happen? And that means that we're still providing the best services possible. You know, I always say that, hey, nobody cares about taxes and the rest of that as long as they're getting what they want. When they stop getting what they want and you start to have to reduce some things as far as services, people get a little antsy about what you're doing up there with the money. So I say that to say that I believe that we have a partnership. And I'm willing to look at some things that's gonna be in the best interest. I believe that what the scenario that you placed up there are good for the hospital. Might not be as good for us, but it's good for the hospital because it does take more off of the lease, which gives you additional dollars to operate. And in the ideal world, it would be good just to take the lease for the dollar payment, throw it away, and not have to deal with it. But because we're not dealing in the ideal world, that means that there needs to be some type of compromise somewhere in terms of trying to get where you wanna go and trying to still be able to operate the city in what I've heard mentioned as a fiscally responsible manner. So I think that at the end of the day, when we have a chance to listen, and I'm not sure if Budget Advisory Committee, because they've had a chance to grasp some of the things that we have now, have some thought, or whether somebody else in the audience has some thought, I would ask as we do open it up that we adhere to the time in terms of being able to say whatever you wanna say and say it in a concise manner so that we can still get to the point that where we're at, and that's deliberation. Where are we, what can we all come together on to make a decision about? Whether it's dollars, whether it's going with the line item, whether it's looking at referendum, you know, those type of things that we still have to make a decision on. So with that, what I'll do is first ask if the Budget Committee members would have anything to say, and then if someone else in the public has some additional comments.
Mr. Mayor, may I say one more thing?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I think it's, again, it's my representation to you, and I hope I've established a track record of being very transparent, very honest with the community. You know, clearly, this hospital has struggled over the years. Between 2006 and 2011, the hospital lost thirty-three million dollars. Clearly, UCH did not, was not, you know, they were struggling and they felt that it was a good partnership with Adventist Health System to be taken over. And so, you know, there was a reason that they did that. You know, clearly, if this community, if this hospital was thriving, you know, if it was, you know, I wouldn't be up here because I don't, I'm not, you know, this is not what I consider fun. I like being back at the hospital, you know, managing the hospital, making sure that our patients are getting the care that they deserve. So it's not something that, you know, we said, hey, why don't we go and see if we can, you know, you know, ask the city for money here because we understood what the responsibilities and what the obligation we took on back in 2010. You know, I think that, you know, clearly, as I've represented to you, not a, you know, there's, again, not any, or, you know, the number of hospitals that are in this situation that are in much bigger markets. I mean, you can do the, you can probably guess which hospitals have seven million dollars per month in community benefits versus what we do is about one point three million dollars per month in community benefits. They've got a lot more latitude, a lot more ability to absorb a lease payment, yet in their community, it was decided that, you know, that wasn't necessary or it wasn't, the county and/or the city decided it wasn't important, they were just thankful to have a hospital. So again, I think that as Commissioner Terapone said, this is your hospital at the end of the lease. This is an improvement to the community. So it's not like we're going to take the money and run. We, you know, and I'm perfectly comfortable with the concept that, you know, until we open it with a saturated occupancy, then we can, you know, figure out how the money is funded to that project. But at the end of the day, it is your hospital in twenty-five years. And I hope, as I said at last meeting, I hope we're not even talking about twenty-five years because I hope you and the rest of the commissioners and the community knows that we wanna be here. You know, let's sign a ninety-nine-year lease and, you know, and just plan on both parties being comfortable with each other because I think we've demonstrated we wanna be here as a long-term hospital in this community. So I just-
And I just say this, that I appreciate those comments. And I do believe, and I think all of us believe in what Commissioner Tarpani said in terms of it being city-owned. And I don't think we'd even be talking if we didn't believe that.
Sure.
This is, to me, is an investment in something that the city owns. But the question is, how much should you invest? Because the same city that you talked about in terms of how much that hospital might be giving away, I guarantee you, if they looked at their budget and you take what we're talking about, taking from our budget, snatching it out of there with no real way of replacing it. See, that's the thing. And we're talking about eliminating the lease and that money was not going towards anything, it would be somewhat of an easy decision.
Sure.
And I think that as people understand that when you take that money out, something's gonna happen. You know, I, Commissioner Banther, he's good with numbers.
I don't know, I'm good on that.
One plus one is two, period. I tell people I run life like that, one plus one is two. You get to that, then you'll be all right. Similarly, because if you take the money out, a couple of things have to happen. And Vice Mayor alluded to that. You're gonna either replace it with some other monies, and we only have a few ways of replacing it. One of them, we don't even wanna talk about, and that's raising taxes. To replace the money that we're giving away, and people say, why did you give it away? Did maybe you have to pay more? So that's something that we have to think about. Or the other part that people don't like to talk about is let's eliminate some services. We close the library for a few nights there maybe, and we don't do some things here for as raises. Because all the dollars that we have within that is earmarked for something. I don't think that this commission was fiscally irresponsible to say, we're just gonna do frivolous things with the dollars. We tried to look at the budget in a very conservative manner. Now you just take that money out of there and say, what are you gonna do for replacing it? So that's the dilemma that we're looking at, in my eyes. We're trying to say, at least for me, where is that comfort level? That we can be good partners and invest in the hospital, then be good stewards to the people that put us up here. So it's not a thing where we don't understand what the hospital has done. I think all of us understand the impact the hospital has made on this community. And we hope, I think all of us do, that it's a continuous one. But that doesn't mean that, you know, you let your emotions, because if that was the thing where you would just come to us and say, hey, don't worry about it, you know, we'll take care of it on our end. But you can't look at it from an emotional perspective and we can't either. So that's all I'm saying as we move forward, we wanna make some decisions.
And I think on some level, Mayor, you could draw a parallel. We are providing a city service to those in the community that can't afford healthcare. We do it every single day.
And you're true, that I have no disagreement with that fact right now.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, do y'all have anything to say? If not, then we'll open it up. I mean, the Budget Committee, you know, you, Mr. Peters and Jenkins, y'all have something that y'all wanna add to this?
Marty Peters, seventeen oh two, Heritage Oaks Court, Vice Chair of the Budget Advisory Committee. Speaking as an individual, the Budget Advisory Committee has not taken a position on this. We just got the information at our last meeting. And I guess that's one of the things I would like you to consider. The emergency room is not built yet. One of the commissioners mentioned it really shouldn't be done until the emergency room is actually built. We shouldn't be, we wanna make sure that it gets built. And I wonder if it wouldn't be worth looking at this next year, maybe after the emergency room is built. Let me talk a little bit about things like Commissioner Banther mentioned. He likes numbers, I like numbers, I don't know them as well as he does. But it seems to me that this ER plan that we just got, the proposal for the city donation, came rather quickly and it needs to be acted upon rather quickly. And I just wonder if we couldn't slow it down a little bit and analyze it a little bit more. We're taking some money from the city budget. There are reasons for taking things from the city budget. And by the way, the hospital does a terrific job, everybody agrees with that. I've not met anybody in the community who doesn't. So we're not talking about that. But it seems like you came in, and not you personally, but the hospital, they came in and signed a contract. So there was an expectation of how much you were gonna pay, how much we were gonna get. And the Budget Advisory Committee is a commission, everybody takes a look at that and plans for the future. Then it seemed like you realized you needed a new emergency room. You got out and got a plan for a new emergency room, got it going, then went down to Palm Harbor and decided to build an annex down there, basically. Then started looking at the money and said, well, where can we get some money? And came back and asked if the city could contribute some instead of right up front during the original planning. And the issue that Commissioner Seaver raised, what do other hospitals contribute, or what do other cities, subdivisions contribute to your individual hospitals? How many hospitals are in your system? So there's forty-three hospitals. It would be nice to get a list of those forty-three hospitals and see if there's any donations from the city one way or another, whether there's a lease there or not. In other words, is it common business practice? I don't like to see money given away, but if it's a common business practice, like we do some things with facade grants and things like that to help the businesses out here. But if it's not a common business practice for the cities and others to be making these kind of contributions to hospitals, and I don't know if it is, then maybe the city shouldn't be doing it at all, even though we like what you're doing. So I would like to, if it hangs around so that the Budget Advisory Committee gets to talk about it some more, I would like to see the individual hospitals, and not only your hospitals, you could even broaden it to other ones. Your competition, you wanna be competitive, that's partially why you're coming here asking for money. The City Commission wants to be competitive, that's why we talk about the mileage rate. And when the Budget Advisory Committee makes recommendations as to city salaries and things like that, the question we always ask is how do we compare to other cities, other subdivisions? We want our people to be competitive. So I'd like more information on how it's competitive. The other thing I think you might wanna consider in that nobody's talked about is part of the reason the contribution increases over time is because of inflation. And that's a long period there. And while we haven't had much inflation lately, still, that three hundred thousand dollars and by 2013 isn't gonna be the three hundred thousand dollars today. Thank you.
Do you have a down?
I really don't have any, Mr. Peters, I think-
If you do wanna talk, we asked if you would go to the mic and name it. No, let me stop you now. Anybody would like to have anything else to say? Well, then we get back to, you know, where we was kinda at, and that's trying to make some type of decision about what we like to do going forward, you know, if there's a comfort level. And I understand that the hospital would like to do it for the least is concerned so that they can look at, at least write some of it all. The part that I heard about waiting until it's built to decide, I'm kinda curious if we don't do something, will it just be built anyway? It doesn't seem like that to me, is that all of it hinges upon what happens with the various types of partnerships from us to foundations to Adventists. I mean, I might be wrong, if you wanted to speak to that.
You know, at this point, we don't have any indication from the corporate office that they would fund this project, Mayor. So, you know, it's, we'd have to circle back and figure, how do we make this, you know, happen without any contribution or, as was suggested earlier, toward this project? If I may, I know the gentleman here spoke to how many other cities are making a contribution. I think the answer to that is very minimal, if any, but not many hospitals are making, are paying rent toward the city. So I think you could understand that, you know, either you're paying rent or, you know, they're not receiving contributions nor are they paying rent, so.
Well, as we open up, I can say this, is that, you know, my, when I came in, my purpose was if we would do something that would be line item, that would give future commissioners the opportunity to make some type of decision. Listening to the hospital and listening to my colleagues, I don't have a great problem in looking at, say, the three hundred and some thousand dollars and looking at it being with the lease because of this. If we do it, it's gonna go out to what I consider is the people that own this city, and that is the taxpayer. They will be making an decision for any type of future commission. They will be saying that they would like to have it because it's important. So that, other than that, I would think that we would look at, you know, everybody having a chance to continually make that type of adjustment. I really don't know what adjustment is made if it starts to really prosper, you know, if there are any adjustments on the other end. But that's how I feel, you know, so.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
Because all you know, I have some pretty strong feelings of it, but I've turned it over to you to say. But I can tell you the one thing tonight I'm concerned about. I don't think we should go into any of these exercises beyond tonight, the next meeting, a referendum. I think we need that firm commitment from corporate office that this emergency room is gonna be built. And that goes to my whole line of how this thing started. And the building of one in Palm Harbor and the feelings that should put both of them together. But if we're gonna do this, if it's the referendum process, the referendum fails, are they not gonna build it? If we do it one way, are they not gonna build it? And I think pretty well, not only do we have a lot of work to do to get to mid-December and have this on- And I think pretty well, we, not only do we have a lot of work to do to get to mid-December and have this on the ballot, but I think us, I think you as a board need to know, is this, we have to do something or that thing is not gonna be built? Because again, from the start, there should have never been a project in Palm Harbor. It didn't include the money to renovate this facility at our facility first. So we need to find out what the commitment is, whether it's the people see what we're contributing and the people need to contribute and corporates there. And I think that's a very important thing to sit and consider, you know? Are we gonna end up in March, no matter what we do, you know, is gonna fail? Because there's no commitment. I think we need a commitment from them that they're gonna build this emergency room and then we'll be able to do it. So that's just all I'll say of that right now.
Question back.
Yes, I'm not so sure. And there were some great things brought up, by the way, Marty and everybody, that talked about looking at things. And I think obviously from what we've been told, it is rare that a hospital has a capitalized lease of this nature with the city. Doesn't mean that's wrong, but we're just unique in that. So it does leave a little bit of a deficit of other data to, to, to look at. But overall, kinda back away from specific numbers. I'm not so sure if it's black and white, like if it fails or if we don't recommend this or don't hit that number as a board, that they will or won't do that. I mean, in business, things are fluid. You're working with different moving pieces. So I know that's not really the answer most of us won't want to hear, but I just think that's the case. I don't, I don't think it's black and white. As far as the commitment goes, I mean, I think the fact that we're sitting here having this conversation and they're here talking to us, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I don't know what a commitment we could ask for. Maybe get something in writing possibly, but I have, I have solace with the fact that they don't, they don't get a dime of reduction in the lease until it's CO. I would in no way support it going forward if they got it tomorrow or after the vote rather. And the vote's a big hurdle too. So the fact that it has to be CO to get it, you know, and, and, and the efforts the hospital has made so far, that's enough that I need to know that they are committed. And I think overall, if we chose not to do something or if we chose to send it out to, to the ballot and it failed, be more of a signal to the hospital long-term of what the city's commitment was. And this is good or bad, it's just what it is. Or what the, the town as a whole, what our commitment was to, to the hospital. I think that's more of the effect that it would have. But, you know, I'm very glad that it's not something that, that this board decides final, that it does go out to the ballot if we decide to, to, to send it there and that the citizens can weigh in. They don't get to weigh in directly. Most of our decisions, they can voice their opinion and we take it into consideration. They can elect us or not elect us, but it's something that they can directly have a say in. And I think that's a very important thing and that gives me some comfort in that, in that it's not just us making that decision. But I, I don't say that to say I don't take it lightly that our recommendation is serious. But bottom line, I think the hospital has shown the commitment enough that I need to move forward. For all, for all, for all the reasons that I, that I, I listed, so thank you.
Thank you. I don't have a lot additional to say. I, in terms of whether or not it's, it's being done as a line item in the budget, we've already heard that that's not particularly useful for the hospital. So we're looking at a referendum. If, if this thing goes out for a referendum to reduce the lease by some dollar figure, I could see residents asking us as the elected officials, hey, I saw in the newspaper that we're already taking money from reserves. How, how can we afford to lower the lease payment? And unless, unless we know exactly how we're gonna make that happen, I don't know how I would answer that question. So I continue to be in the same spot where if we are voting in favor of moving this toward a referendum, that means we, we want to lower the lease payment, I still would like to know where we think that money is coming from.
And what I'll do is I'll move to you, Pusha Tarpan, and I'll give you a chance to, to think about this, Mr. LaCorus. My thoughts are is that while I understand your initial thought and feelings, you put together some scenarios for us based upon what you felt was reasonable projections as we move forward. Whether that's the property values are gonna go up some, we're gonna do X, Y, Z, that would eliminate some things, which is why I believe that it looks at the three hundred some thousand, this forty-eight thousand the first year. You know, you're only looking at a certain amount of money that you would need to continue to operate at a certain level until, you know, it pushes it further down the line, looking for what we consider is good times. Not, nothing is stone as to it's gonna be this way or that way. But I, I assume that that's how you projected, but you can tell us, I'll move down and you can think about that for a second. Commissioner Tarpan.
Thank you. Just a couple of things that were brought up additionally. Starting with Mr. LaCorus, your concern, and that's moving forward and how do we move forward? And how do we know that the hospital's committed? And I tend to agree with Commissioner Banther, but the biggest key to it all is the CO. The referendum isn't gonna cost us anything. We're already scheduled to have an election. So there's no cost for the referendum. There's no cost for the hospital for referendum. So, you know, is there some staff time involved in preparing the ballot language? Is there some attorney's fees associated with that? Yes. But ultimately, if we're not contributing anything one way or other until the hospital's built and has a CO, then, you know, what difference does that make? Cause ultimately, they're still gonna have to get a further confidence level within the community to know that they can raise, excuse me, the five million. So that's number one. The other thing is from where Vice Mayor Larson's coming from is that I, I think, going back in my memory, based on some of the, the budget discussions that we had throughout the year and maybe moving forward, since ultimately this is just a workshop and we're not gonna take a vote tonight one way or another, and ultimately this will have to come back to, to the next meeting. At the next meeting, if we could have some of the projections that we discussed during the budget year in terms of additional ad valorem revenue from the ongoing projects that we know that's gonna come on, the gun range, the other residential development sites, et cetera, et cetera. You know, maybe that in itself makes up the forty-one thousand dollars if we were to settle in at the three hundred thousand dollar freezing of the lease. So, you know, we may not have to dig, dig, dig and reinvent the wheel to come up with some of that data. That data could potentially already exist in terms of projections. The other thing that I think is, is important is it's something that the mayor said moving forward and then I'm, you know, then my comments are pretty much done, is that we wouldn't be talking about this tonight if, if this wasn't a reinvestment into a city-owned asset, okay? So that's, that's what it is, plain and simple. I mean, whatever we do to contribute to the new ER, it can be justified, looked at, whatever you wanna call it, as a reinvestment. Cause that's what it is. And it's a reinvestment in a brand-new ER facility, which is something that the community needs and owns. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I also believe that the hospital is committed to this project and I understand the reinvestment. Mr. Peters brought up inflation. And so when I look at twenty thirty-nine, I think about freezing it for that long. Again, I go back to thinking, should we put a time limit on it, so five years? And would the citizens maybe appreciate that too, thinking twenty thirty-nine is a long time away to think that we're gonna freeze this lease and, and what, anything could happen. A catastrophe could happen. We may need the money. So that is a long time to, you know, sign something. So again, I would suggest maybe considering doing it for a time limit and then going back and looking at it again.
Mayor, can I make one addition?
Yeah, cool.
Commissioner Tarpan brought up a very good point in regards to future revenue calculations and projections in relationship to the gun range as well as lows and other residential projects. I just wanted to point out, based on the conversation I had with the city manager yesterday, the projections we've been getting already include those projects. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And, and I think it's important that we know that because some of the future residential projects may or may not happen and we're already including them in our projections. And I, I think it's important that we're aware of that.
What projections are those as it relates to this?
Well, let me go ahead and answer the mayor's question now, cause I might make it clearer in putting these things together. Obviously, when we do the projections, as we tell you every four, you know, every four months when we do it, you know, we're trying to look way ahead and, and don't know what's going on. We don't know if next year the communication tax is gonna get cut and we're a hundred thousand or more. We don't know. We just try to give the best estimates. When we gave you the estimates, here's where we are now in the plan that we've given you to talk about. We hopefully, by two more years, we are hoping, and our goal was that with the revenues, with the gun range lows, within, by two more years, we were hoping to maybe be at a point where the budget was balanced and we're not doing reserve. Again, projection with so many factors that we can do. Now, when we get to that point, there's a lot, it's not as easy as that when you're talking. When you get to that point, as you said, you've got some major projects that have been put behind. We're doing a lot of them, but we've got projects to do. We've got expenditures. We got places we wanna go. We have got commissioners now and I know in the future that talk about if we get to a point of balance in the budget, we need to get that milage rate down a little more. So we've got all those factors in there to go through that we're thinking about. It's not just getting to the balanced budget, would not use it from reserves. But then what do we do? What projects can we do with that extra money coming in? And I wanna thank Commissioner Tarpan. He is right. This example I gave you, the three hundred thousand, I think is, is manageable. I think the only qualms I have, I don't have any qualms for the next five years. That's what I'm worried about. That's what I worry about right now. In a perfect world, they'd have built the emergency room, said they need to hunt down the future. In five years, when we look at everything and see what those projections are the five years, where we are in the budget, that would have been ideal. Obviously, that's not the case. That would be ideal, cause, you know, when you go to all the training and you listen to all the people, there are still people saying this economy is gonna go back in the hole again in a year or two. We can't project that. If that happens, all bets are off. So I'm still conservative for the next five years with everything going on in this country. Where the economy is gonna be is my projections right? Or is something gonna happen like happened in two thousand seven, eight and nine? That progression, is that gonna come back again like some were projected? And we don't know that, so we just give the best estimates. This plan here that I gave you, even if it's by the lease, as you can see, I'm comfortable with five years. Again, Commissioner Seaver brings a new point though. What are we, you know, we can't say what we're doing to the commission and the city manager here in other years when you got the substantial two hundred thousand and two hundred thousand. But, you know, that, that's troublesome to do. But I am comfortable that if you went to this referendum and it passed, that, you know, you know, this is the best scenario where revenues will come in without a crash or something. I think we could handle it. I don't think it would affect the reserve. I think it'd even help us, you know, reduce the milage rate a little bit if we thought we needed to cause the revenue going in. And again, it's a, it's a picture we're not gonna have clear for two or three years, five at the most. But you're right, that's why this was given to you, I think, for us and our business. You know, I know their business says and I know in their business, three million is one point six million. But for the taxpayers and us, that's three million dollars. That's, that's general fund, whatever you three hundred million, whatever their figures say is three million. And we gotta account for what we're doing along. And I think this is the, the plan that makes us safe. If in five years, the circumstances are different, we got a ton of revenue come in, then maybe we go back to the ballot again or something. But I'm concerned about the next five years. I'm concerned about getting in two years to not pulling from the reserve. I'm concerned if, if there's a push from the citizens and everybody to start lowering the milage rate, which again, let me say for the umpteenth time, there are five large full-service cities in Pinellas County. Largo just passed us. The only city that has a lower milage rate than us is Clearwater. And we all know the economy and the benefit of the beaches and stuff, and they're still at five, one, nine. And we're only at five, four, five, but Largo, I think, two hundred points ahead of us. So of the only major full-service cities, we're fourth out of five in the good as far as military rate goes. So that's why when people talk about lowering the military rate, I'm not concerned because you're comparing them to cities that aren't full-service and don't do what we do. So, but I know there'll be the push to lower those things. So this is a scenario that right now, from the best projection, we can see if we do it, we would have the minimal effect on, on reserves, on millage, on things in the future and have the ability to see in the next two to five years where the economy, where our revenues are going. Cause again, remember with the legislating and stuff, we've got some cuts in our revenues that may come, you know? And, you know, the one that's always up there is that communication tax. So, but who knows what other cuts for revenue or what unfunded mandates get sent down to us that continue to go. So, but in, in all the world, that's why I gave you that this would be the way I could go and be comfortable. And I think you could be comfortable stewards of the budget, that this, this is where you're going. And they're all projections. It could fall apart with something that happens before. But we've, we, Rod and I have sat down meticulously and considered all these things. And this is just the best scenario we can give you and keep on course with what we've been doing for the last three or four years, this commission with the budget and to get it to the place we wanna be and not pulling reserves.
Well, I, I, I thank you for that. I don't know whether you'll still be able to do what Commissioner Tarpan has said in terms of looking and, and seeing whether that's even possible in terms of, of, in an ideal world, what would have to happen with you and Ron in terms of property values going up this much, this much? In terms of, of dealing with just the deficit that we're talking about for next year and the rest of that. But I, I will say this is that while the city manager talked about something as far as corporate is concerned, I like to believe that, that, that corporate supports this and backs this. I can tell you that I think that's important. I think it's very important when you put something out to the, to the voters and you're saying that the city, the people that, that you elected to represent you believe that this is something that you should go forward with, that there is the other party assuring that we're in the fight with you. Without that, it, it, it gives people not a real warm and pleasant feeling. It's like, you know, well, corporate's not there, they're not supporting it. Y'all pushing it while you're pushing it and, and they're not. So I'm, I'm hoping that if it's the wishes of this body to move forward in terms of asking the people that we're moving forward as a partner, you know? To me, that's what's important. Commissioner Tarpan has said, we said it in terms of investing in something that we own, wanting it to get better, that it can provide better services for the people that's, that's here. So it's not an easy thing. I mean, hey, none of us know what the future's gonna look like. You know, we all projecting great things happening. But in doing that, you still have to have some reservation in trying to do some things in what I consider a conservative manner. I, I believe that's what our finance department and our city manager have come up with to say, if you wanna move this way, this is the best way. This is what we can support. We believe that we can make this happen if you wanna move this way, you know? Ideally, tell you again, to tell you, don't go nowhere, you know, let them do it by themselves. But, you know, I, I just wanted to reiterate that I believe that's a partnership and I believe that corporate will, will be very supportive and would need to be very supportive in moving this referendum if that's the wishes of this body in terms of its facts. So with that, you know, we're still at a point whereas, you know, do we wanna move ahead? What do we want the city manager to do in terms of trying to make that happen for any type of vote at the next? So it's some direction to him. Yes, sir.
I mean, I, I think, you know, I mentioned in the beginning, two fifty to three hundred as far as the lease production goes or the, well, the, sorry, freezing the lease at, at that level. That's still where I would, where I would be looking forward. And again, I, I, I trust that these numbers prepared at the three hundred thousand mark are comfortable. And that's where I would be looking to go forward at.
Now, I can look at it this way. You could almost do it in a sense of what you have here, you know, and bringing that forward.
Well, again, I would.
Nothing? Do we want to go to referendum? And then it would be at what rate that we would need to, in terms of just trying to figure out what should that next meeting look like?
Again, as a starting, I don't have any problem bringing to your recommendation, listening to everybody in the compromise. I have no problem bringing to you the recommendation of the lease referendum at the three hundred thousand and bringing that to you to openly discuss and hear the public at a public meeting and then, you know, make a decision to that. I do, again, going back to what I said, if we do that and put it to a referendum, we need to make sure if it passes, that corporate accepts that and they're gonna do it. Cause there's no sense going through all that. If that's not enough, if that doesn't meet that and they're not gonna do it, there's no sense going through that exercise. So I just, that's where I was talking about going through the exercise. So, I just, that's where I was taught about going through the exercise. If we choose to go this method I recommend, you choose to send it to the voters and it passes, we have to have the commitment that it's gonna be built in a timely manner and up and going, and that would be in the referendum question. I would, but that's something we talk about, that's not next meeting. Next meeting, we decide the form, then we bring back in the ordinance, the language, and I, and my recommendation, that language is gonna be, you know, the time for you to do it. But I have no, if, if it's consensuous to bring that back as a point of discussion and you can boil it down, I'll bring that, I'll bring that to the board.
I, I just say, you know, I, I think that Commissioner Tarpan hit on something and he can reiterate if he chooses to, that if we go out to a referendum and this is what we're gonna do and they don't do anything, then we're not gonna do anything either. We're gonna, it's as usual, we're just gonna be moving down the same line that we went down in terms of, you know, you're not gonna do anything, we're just gonna continue to operate just like we operated beforehand. It, it takes some action on their part to move us, but those are the things that we can talk about more. We have our attorney here, I know he's been captioning all of that, they have their attorney there, so that when we're really talking about this, there's no misunderstandings about where we at, what it takes to move this thing, you know? And, you know, this is, the, the thing that to everybody, this is not a, a simple matter of just saying, hey, let's do it, you know? This, I think, is something that all of us are weighing out as to what's gonna happen to the hospital as a whole, but also what's gonna happen to the city of Tarpon and our residents as we move forward and so. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I'm in favor, just to kinda cut to the chase here, is how we move forward. I'm in favor of bringing it back and talking about the three hundred thousand, okay, at a formal commission meeting. But look at it like this, Mark, and we've discussed this before on other issues in the city, doing the right thing and holding our head high. If we do what we say we're gonna do and they don't do what they say they're gonna do, we hold, we hold our head high and we walk away. The only thing that's gonna happen if we go to referendum and it, and it passes and they don't build ER, is it's back to mistrust in the community and they're not gonna do that. They work too hard to build the trust and spend millions of dollars to gain the trust of the community. So, if we do what we say we're gonna do and it doesn't happen, then we still hold our head high and we walk away. But I mean, ultimately, nothing bad is gonna happen if, you know, we go to a meeting, we take a formal vote, we develop referendum language and then the ER doesn't get built. We're not, we haven't contributed any money, right? So, I mean, that's my feeling towards that.
Okay.
Any additional?
No, I agree with what you just said.
Well, if, kinda know where we at in terms of moving forward, um, so we will, um, end this workshop. Any staff comments to you?
No comments, Mayor.
Mr. Tarpan?
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
Any?
Okay, how is it that, remember, we're in this new room, we had last time, it was said it was too hot, 'cause we were a little bit fuller. Now, it, I think it's adjusted up to me, it's got a little warmer, a little more-
It's the most comfortable I've had.
Again, we're-
More comfortable now than I was before.
You know what, I, I think everybody's just throwing out now, it might be getting a little more-
We're gonna try to go, we're gonna try to go in between for the next one and get to the right-
This is perfect right now.
It really depends, it really depends on the issues we're discussing, I guess.
Well, if, if the crowd, you know, if all these seats are full, believe me, we saw from the last time with the crowd that it just drew and you could see the temperature going up in the room when it was consistent. So, we still gotta get used to it's gonna gauge, but if the crowd's light and we got it said it's gonna be colder, so we'll keep work, we promise, we'll keep working on those and try to get to that mid-comfort level.
Sounds good.
I'll dress warmer.
Could, could, could we get this, uh, though, send via, uh, via, uh, though, uh, though, though, email to us?
Sure, we can do that.
Could you, could you also send your full, the presentation on the, 'cause we'd like to put that online and on the website, the, the presentation-
We can do that for you. I, I wanna say thank you, thank you for your time. I know that, uh, it's an additional day out of your personal life here, but I do appreciate the, the, the focus here and I do think that each and every person around here wants to do what's best for the community. And I believe a healthy hospital, a healthy city makes a healthy, you know, organ, uh, healthy community to live in. So, I know at the end of the day, we're all on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I have no additional comments.
Let's see, let's see. Let me see, now, last time I kept trying to make it eight twenty-five, is it really summer?
No, it's over.
Well, we'll adjourn this meeting at eight twenty-five.
I love it. I'd sweat one, man.
You almost-
It was.
Really?